Mayor Tonita Gurleah Gilon.
President.
Councilor David G. Romero.
Here.
Councilor Barbara Casey.
Here.
Councilor Vincent Howell.
Here.
Councilor David A. Yulubree Jr.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do have a call.
Pleasure, Regent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and no such law.
Moment of silence. There's two things. First, please protect the police officers in Philadelphia. I know there's a big shooting incident there and keep the community safe also. Secondly, please give our governing body the guidance to do the right thing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
While we continue, I would like to recognize the Honorable Brian Gurleah Gilon, State Attorney. Thank you for being here, Mr. Gilon.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor. Councilor.
Okay, continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, you're welcome. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
What is the pleasure award? Madam Mayor, that was great. I move approval of the agenda as presented. You have.
Set to the second.
Go ahead.
Councilor Howell.
Yes.
Councilor Yulubree Jr.
Yes.
Councilor Romero.
Yes.
Councilor Casey.
Yes.
I'm motioned by Councilor Casey and a second by Councilor Romero and Councilor Howell. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is public input. And the first person is Ms. Ambroki Matana, Mayor of Las Vegas.
That's me. Do I have a copy table?
Um, there's a mine.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon, Las Vegas. I'll try to speak louder enough that they might pick me up. I'm really inspired to see so many local.
Excuse me, Ms. Matana. When you are addressing the council, you have to face the council.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Mm-hmm. Um, I'm really frustrated, probably like many of my fellow Las Vegans, to see so much of our town literally crumbling around us. Our water system is in a complete mess, our roads and our government. I feel amazed when I read about all the allegations that are circling the office of the mayor and/or I'm even here to witness the meltdowns that happened in this city hall. I'm disgusted when I learn that contractors are being robbed of an opportunity to make our town great and keep it a livable place, a place that they can be proud of and a place they can like protect and call home. And I'm appalled when I read about kickbacks and bid breaking and collusion and racial abuse that are happening by the person that's supposed to be leading our town. I could go on and on about all the things that we know that are happening, but I do want to say that I'm inspired to see so many Las Vegans coming out and asking questions and being critical of the things that were happening. I hope all of you show up next week for the regular council meeting and you bring a friend who will also come and voice their concerns because obviously our local government has gotten too complacent in the idea that we're not going to ask questions and we're not going to push back. So, with the last few seconds I have, I just really urge all of you to keep participating, get more people involved, keep asking questions and keep bringing up the issues until we're unadmirable. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Matana.
The next person on public input is Chris Armejo. Asne.
Good evening, Mayor Gurleah Gilon, City Councilors. It's a pleasure to address you this evening. Even with that storm brewing out there, it sounded promising. Um, I'm here first of all and I hope I'm not being too short, but I want to thank you for your consideration when you go through the budget and the negotiated items that we have with the City of Las Vegas for Asne Local 2051. My name again is Chris Armejo. I am the staff representative out of Asne Council 18 out of Albuquerque. And we negotiated a contract. I want to thank the negotiating team for the city. It went smooth, probably the quickest we ever gotten a contract done, so I was really excited about that. And there again, I want to thank you for that. I do have one other request, though I understand you're going to do a work session following this meeting if that comes up. I would like to request that, as City Councilors, that possibly look forward to that Sauter Miller associate contract. Find out what the role is of Sauter Miller to train our, our membership down at wastewater. Uh, there's been a couple of issues that have come out of that. One was, which was that a, one of our union members was assaulted by a supervisor down there and it's a great concern to us. There was some grievances filed. Not going to go into detail because I can't do that. We had some improper requests that we made and received. Some improper requests back, but they're working complete. We're going to have to follow up with some more. But I think that in the best interest of the City of Las Vegas that maybe that discussion should be made as far as the role of Sauter Miller, the training that we're supposed to afford to our membership, which they haven't. There's been a long growing tempest that's been going on out there. Uh, we brought it to the attention of the Utilities Director and it hasn't been resolved and now ended up with this assault of our membership. So, if you could at least maybe make those increase, it will be greatly appreciated on behalf of the union. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gurleah Gilon. That concludes public input, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The item is the approval of Resolution Number 19-37, establishing the location of election day polling places for the municipal officer election conducted in 2020. Thank you very much. What is the pleasure award?
Consent.
Consent.
Agreed motion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 19-37, establishing the location of our election day polling places for the municipality, municipal officer election conducted in 2020.
Go ahead, Judge Asne.
Second.
Go ahead.
Councilor Casey.
Yes.
Councilor Romero.
Yes.
Councilor Yulubree Jr.
Yes.
Councilor Howell.
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilor Howell and a second by Councilor Yulubree Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item is the business items. We have approval of Resolution Number 19-39, to through the final 2018, 2019 DFA financial reports, report for submission to DFA Local Government Commission. And we have Ms. Tanabega, NLM Finance Director.
Good evening, Ms. Tanabega.
Thank you, Ms. Tanabega.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The Finance Department is seeking approval, disapproval of Resolution 1979, which is our final 2018, 19 DFA reporting report.
Okay. Questions? Any comments?
This is on the local government budget management system report?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, um, I have some questions. On the actual recap, could you explain the actual changes of revenue with the actual decrease and the actual increases on the, on that line, those line items on the actual recap?
Would that be the recap that is presented to you? That would be, these changes are to the final budget as presented, delivered to you on July 26.
Okay, got you.
So, these do not affect our quarterly report. These changes do not affect our quarterly report.
Okay, and how does it affect the operating budget?
The operating budget for 2020, um, the majority of the changes were to the beginning cash balances that we had submitted on our preliminary budget.
Okay.
Additionally, the changes to revenues are increases in, we received in between the time that the preliminary budget was approved to the final budget, we received a word letter from grants and those are the additions and to revenues and expenditures that I have included in here.
Okay, so there, both are grant funds into the actual.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilor, you ready?
On the transfers, can you explain some of the transfers that you made?
Sure.
Uh, the, this, uh, cash transfers.
Yes, ma'am. Which ones?
The cash transfers.
Cash, the cash one.
And which funds?
All those. Yeah, I was just trying to see what, which ones you transferred and what to what.
Um, as far as, uh, operating transfers into the various funds.
Yes, ma'am.
The general fund, um, I didn't do anything on the DFA quarterly. The DFA quarterly is all based on cash basis and it was based on the final approved budget we had for the 2018. If we're talking final budget, um, those I can respond to.
Let's talk about the final budget.
The final budget. Uh, the general fund for 2020 is budgeting $75,000 to the senior center for operating costs, $87,000 to the transportation department for operating costs, $400,000 to the rec center to assist them with their operating costs and $25,000 to, uh, the Fiesta Fund to assist them with the Fiesta activities. Any other questions? Don't be patient.
Thank you. On, on this report.
Yes, ma'am.
It's always nice to see money coming in.
Oh, yes.
But I still, I still have questions on, uh, the changes to the expenditures.
Yes, ma'am.
We have fire protection fund with a decrease of $48,936.
If you'll note, uh, under increases and decreases, the beginning cash, um, the anticipated beginning cash on the preliminary was actually reduced to the final, cash balances was reduced by $73,511. Now, they did get an increase in their, um, rent from, from the fire protection. However, I did have to reduce expenditures by $48,936 in order to balance that budget.
Okay. That was going to be my next question. With these increases and changes to the expenditures, do we still have a balanced budget?
We still have a balanced budget. Additionally, you'll note I had to decrease expenditures in the road, in street projects because, um, the ending cash, actual cash balance was $105,000 less than what had been anticipated on the preliminary.
Okay. Thank you. I'll reserve my other questions for when we get to the actual budget. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor. Ms. Vega.
Yes.
Looking at this report, municipal streets, we got an increase of $114,000.
Yes, sir.
Where did that come from?
The cash balance.
Yes.
That was, uh, then preparing the preliminary budget, uh, beginning cash balances are in, are, have to be estimated because there are still expenditures that are occurring in the month of June. And, uh, so, because our preliminary budget has to be submitted by June 1st. So, we still have a month of total expenditures. And the anticipated expenditures that I expected to occur did not occur, so therefore there was that additional, uh, cash balance.
And so, we have $770,000 for fiscal year 1920?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a plan on what, which streets we're going to be fixing or repairing?
I believe those are consistent with ICIP, is that correct?
Well, there's only one that I saw on the west side. Those two, those two. But I'm talking about generally.
Some of these monies I have, um, are grant monies that have flowed in and, uh, and those projects have been laid out and approved by Mayor and Council as to which road projects are going to be addressed.
That's on the ICIP?
No, the, these are DOT monies.
DOT, okay. But, but generally, instead of the DOT money, what about potholes and do we have the, a plan to fix all those?
Yes, sir. Those are addressed in the final expenditures.
Okay.
And that's under maintenance of roads and aerobuses.
All right. Lodger's tax, we have a decrease. Why is there a decrease?
Uh, anticipated cash balance, that was.
Yes.
The estimated, uh, cash balance on the preliminary was actually greater than the actual and it was $2,300 more in that was expended.
Are we expecting lower lodger's tax funds coming in this year?
Just like the, uh, the GRT lodger's tax has been flat. I, I, I budgeted flat in order, so that we would not over-budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Councilor.
Ms. Vega, coming back to Councilor Howell's question on that $770,000 for, uh, for the municipal streets, what percentage of that is DOT money?
Is what?
Is DOT money, that you said that's coming.
I'm not sure. Off the top of my head, I couldn't give you that answer. I could get back to you on that. But most of the funds that are in the 216 are coming from, um, gasoline taxes and some GRT taxes.
I might be able to answer. There is some funding for the Mountain View project.
Mm-hmm.
There's also funding for, uh, the Romero Street, uh, I believe it's Romero Street that had, and Old National that is also there. Um, let's see. And that's.
A good portion of it's probably that's $700,000.
It's $528,691. Then there's also, uh, I believe that that is, uh, those are the two main projects. We're also looking at Legion Drive and, um, we're keeping our fingers crossed with the CDVG monies. However, the CDVG project, if that is funded, that will take up, I believe, $75,000 in matching funds that will come from here as well as, uh, there's a project out there that we're looking at for Ridge Street and National and that is close to a million and a half. We haven't been awarded yet, but we're hoping that we will acquire those funds as well. So, a lot of those matchings and there is matching in those two projects will have to come out of the, uh, the capital project funds.
Any other questions? I guess so, Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Vega.
Yes, sir.
Since we've contracted with Sauter Miller, where's that budgeted and is it included in this cash balances increase, decrease?
Uh, that's correct. They're budgeted for the wastewater, they're budgeted in the wastewater funds and, um, on our, our charter of the council would be in the 610 and, uh, fund and then, um, the Sauter Miller for the water treatment plant is budgeted in the 640 funds.
Okay, because we, we have a decrease of $102,000 on wastewater?
Yes, sir.
And how much are we allotting for Sauter Miller?
The Sauter Miller project is included with all other professional services. There's, uh, a number of contracts. The total dollar amount for other professional services in the wastewater fund is $350,000.
And is that all going to Sauter Miller?
Part of that would be, not all of it. Part of that would be going to Sauter Miller, yes.
Do you know how much?
I don't, but I can ask, I'm still there.
Mayor, Councilor.
Uh, the Sauter Miller contract, because of the critical nature of it, is a, as needed services, so I can't give you an exact estimate because sometimes we have an emergency and they work overtime, uh, but we would estimate, uh, anywhere from $300,000 to $350,000, I would say, could possibly go to Sauter Miller for the services for, for.
I'll defer my questions during the work session.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilor, you ready? This time out, you had a decrease on the road, street projects of $100,000. Are those, all the streets that we're working on or is it going to affect some of the streets?
It could have been that, um, some funding may come in or, um.
DOT funding, ma'am?
In the 214, yes. That they anticipated, in other words, we have the grant that was approved, however, the, the monies have not come in, have not been received yet. For the audit report, I will be approving any of those amounts that we've already earned and we anticipate, anticipate receiving those in the 2020 year.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? That's good, thank you very much.
Um, we have approval for Resolution, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
What is the pleasure award?
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Casey.
I move approval of Resolution 1940, the final fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget submission to DFA. No, I'm sorry, is that the one?
No, it's 19-39.
Yeah, right. Okay, 19-39.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, is it in the record, is that correct?
Let me, let me do it again, just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
I move approval of Resolution 19-30, final 2018, 2019 DFA financial report.
Okay, now do we have a second? Do we have a second, Councilor? You ready? Go ahead, please.
Councilor Howell.
Yes.
Councilor Romero.
Yes.
Councilor Casey.
Yes.
Councilor Yulubree Jr.
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilor Casey and a second by Councilor Yulubree Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of Resolution Number 1940 to adopt the final FY 2019, 2020 budget for the submission to DFA Local Government Commission. Madam Mayor, we have Tanabega once again.
I, uh, the Finance Department is requesting approval disapproval of Resolution 1940 for the City of Las Vegas final fiscal year 2019, 1920 budget submission to DFA.
Any other questions?
Thank you. You said that the bu, that the balance, that the budget is balanced.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, were there any economic factors that, um, are impacting our budget?
Are she, are you talking internal or external?
Either one.
Not that I can identify. Um, as, as you can see from the increases and decreases in cash, uh, unless we want to say that departments are only making purchases that are necessary and reasonable and, um, therefore we've been able to build up our cash balances and, um, are, are going to be able to fund additional projects in the future. So, that would be the only economic change that I have seen. As far as the general fund goes, the GRTs have remained flat. Taxes, collections have remained flat and that's what I anticipate for the coming year in addition to lodger's tax. And we've also been able to acquire a lot of, of grants and loans for, um, the water projects, so that's assisted and also DOT, uh, grants for, um, for our road projects and legislative appropriation was very generous with this this year and which all of those funds have been included in our budget.
Okay, so on the, um, loans that we have, a lot of them are for, um, matching funds that we get from, we have grants that are matching funds. Do we have enough money to cover all of those?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, as you can see, our, our loan funds are 40, 40, uh, 40,200 and that's for GRT revenue bonds and those bonds are funded, the first phase two of the recreation center and, um, these are GRT revenue bonds. And then the second half, uh, was refunding, uh, general fund, uh, bonds that we had acquired earlier in 2004.
2004.
2004. And then the NMFA loans are under 40,400 with line item and those are all the loans such as for our police vehicles, uh, the fire, uh, equipment, the reader board, which will be paid off this year. There's only, uh, the payments for this year is only $1,900. And, um, we have funded the recreation center, which was, is a big portion of those loans with the NMFA. We have the four million that went to Story Lake here in, uh, in 2019 and then various other, um, water projects. We have, uh, the solid waste, um, and that has, requires a cash reserve and that is on deposit with NMFA, which is part of this cash balance. And then we have the wastewater, those loans are with NMFT and those ones are the ones that are pre-dwelt.
Okay, so with, um, I know that this last fiscal year we were able to pay off like a million dollars worth of, pretty close to a million worth of, um, money that we owed to get various things. When we pay off that, um, that dollar amount that we pay all the monthly on all of those loans remains the same, is that correct? Until we pay them off completely in the year 2025 or whenever it is.
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, how much money do we have in reserves?
Uh, we have $350,000. The reserves are maintained by NMFA, so the city does not have access to those funds. The, um, the solid waste, uh, loan, uh, requires $350,000. The rec center has, um, if I recall correctly, $182,000 and those reserves are to cover one year's debt liability. And of course, all the monies in the two debt service funds are restricted funds. They cannot be scanned for any, uh, any other expenditure.
And those two funds that, uh, that you're referring to, uh, Councilor, is, we have close to $3 million in reserves and those are specifically set aside for, uh, the debt service and we're not allowed to touch those. We have them set aside and they are pretty close to $3 million that we have set aside.
So, um, the $350,000 is to pay back.
It's, it's covered one year.
It covers one year.
Of debt, of principal and interest.
Do we have money to cover, let's say something happens and we need to make a huge expenditure for something, do we have enough money in reserves to cover pay for our employees and insurance and all those kinds of things?
Well, the ones that have the reserves, the, uh, the general fund only is responsible for, um, $2 million and, uh, there's enough money to cover those expenditures, to cover the, the yearly principal and interest. And so, there would be enough money put aside. Now, those, those GRT bonds have no loan covenants except the last year of the loan. So, uh, we would be okay, uh, that's about, right around $186,000, which the general fund would be able to cover.
And, um, how sustainable are the increases that we have? I mean, are those things that we can count on coming in year after year or these are one-time shots?
On, are we?
I believe she's talking about the revenue.
Yeah.
The GRT taxes, uh, have remained flat from, uh, we were on the second year of the anticipated GRT and I did budget flat again with approval from DFA when I, when we submitted our preliminary budget. And property taxes, we saw that a small increase in 2018. We did not receive that and I anticipate that was probably a collection of delinquent taxes. And, uh, so I, we also budgeted flat in that. Lodger's tax, I. Lodger's tax, I haven't seen a substantial increase there either. So any taxes that have been budgeted have been budgeted flat on history, you know, on collections. So, and DFA is okay with that. They've approved those.
And our capital budget, do we have enough money in there to reflect how much of our ICIP?
How much is the ICIP?
The ICIP is close to 28 million that we are requesting.
Yeah. But how much money is in the budget, capital budget, to cover at least part of those?
Part of the projects. We have several projects that we have, right now, we're looking at the Hop Springs Boulevard, we've made it to the next level. That project alone is $750,000, but if we would get it funded and we were awarded that, we would be awarded close to 700,000 with the city coming in at possibly 50,000 to do any kind of matchings. We're also looking at grants for our water projects, and we have budgeted for Peterson Dam. There is going to be a study, feasibility study done on Peterson Dam. We have set aside that funding as well. One other thing is that on the local reserve requirements, DFA does require us to set aside 1/12 of a cash requirement, and Mayor and Council, two to three years ago, did in fact set aside, not only in the general fund, 1/12 of a cash requirement, but they did set aside monies throughout the utility funds and the recreation fund for that 1/12 requirement. So if we did have an emergency, we would be able to meet those as well. We've set aside the 1/12 cash requirement as recommended by DFA.
Okay, thank you.
And that's reflected by not budgeting a portion of the cash balance.
Do we have any unanticipated expenses that you see that might, you might?
Currently, I don't see that. I do know we need to start addressing some of our city buildings, and they are in need of some repairs, some of them, and they should be addressed soon, once we find some monies and can start looking at those. Those would be the anticipated expenditures that I would see.
Do you have any unanticipated revenue declines?
No, not at this point.
Thank you, that's all, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions, Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Vega, two things. The library, it's a library funds. I understand we get state bond funds for the library?
GO bonds.
GO bonds? And how much is that?
It's a two-year grant, so I think I, we used, it was a $40,000 grant that was awarded in 2019, and so what was left of that, I rebudgeted 18,000 for 2019.
Is there a stipulation on this bond that we receive that we have to match it?
No.
There's no stipulations?
There's no stipulations on matching.
And what I understand from Zach, and I believe Zach is here, we're expecting, from the sale of the GOB bonds, we're expecting 53,000, am I correct?
Madam Mayor, Counsel, I just received word Monday from the State Library that for our GOB bonds that were voted on in 2018, we're looking at an increase of almost $13,000 in our GOB bonds. So we're looking at approximately 52,000-some odd dollars.
And there's no stipulation on matching?
Not for the GOB, no, sir.
And is there any other funds that we received that we have to match for the library?
No. Now, those funds, that grant, it will not be available until 2021.
Thank you. My second issue is going back to Solder Miller. What is the contracted dollars that we have allotted for Solder Miller?
In the water fund, it's.
Wastewater?
In the water fund, they did budget 350,000 for professional services, which would cover not only Solder Miller, but also any other additional professional services they would have to contract.
So at this point in time, how much are we paying total?
I don't have a dollar amount on this total Solder Miller.
Counselor, that's dependent on the invoice, which means their hourly rates, how often they come down. They're not here, they're not here on a 40-hour basis. They're here, sometimes they'll be here for three days, sometimes they'll be here for two days. It's just very dependent on how often they're here, and so the invoices do differ on a monthly basis.
Is it over the contracted dollars?
Of course not. No, no, sir. We would not, we would have to amend the contract, and I would have to come to Mayor and Council to amend the contract.
So we're staying within the $300,000?
Yes. And we can bring that contract to you, we'd be glad to review it. We'd be glad to do that.
I just wanted to ask that question because the word out there is that we are spending more than the contracted dollars to pay.
And I'll be glad to bring your due report for you with the next, Counselor, leaving with you.
Okay.
Counselor.
My first question is, I know when we had the budget work session, I had mentioned, we all know that, you know, the starting position labor jobs, you know, they're hard to fill. I know we bumped it up to $9 minimum wage.
Yes, sir.
You know, at that time, I proposed that, you know, can we look at something that paying them, you know, paying a little higher, you know, even if, you know, there's four open positions, eliminate one and boost the starting pay for those ones, so we can attract those positions. And I noticed that we didn't do that, we still kept it at the 907. Can we explain why, or was that not looked into, or?
We kept it at the $9 to start with. That regulation will be changing in January, where it will be going up to $9 if we do any hires or anything of that sort. We've also set aside, if Mayor and Council approve it, the 75 cents, which will bring them to $9.75. We're also looking at people's experience, because the $9 is with no experience and it's starting pay, but let's say someone comes in with a five-year experience, we would allow the five-year experience and of course move them up on the, we have a pay plan that we review for starting pay and for people who have come in. So sometimes they won't even be at $9, sometimes they'll be at 10.50, let's say, based on experience, Counsel. And so we can, once we take a look, once we, if and when the absentee contract is approved, then we'll be looking at higher salaries, which would, at entry level, it would be at $9.75, and I agree with you, I think that we need to do more.
And it's just frustrating because I know the schools have, I think they're about at $10, McDonald's is at $10, so we're not going to find guys that are going to be digging ditches and doing the hard labor work. You know, and it's unfortunate because, you know, the guys that have experience, they're having to work overtime and do double duty. It's just, I think if we, you know, give a little more incentive at the starting positions, we might be able to attract.
I agree with you, sir.
Thank you.
On the recreation, is that a decrease in 2019, or is it an increase, recreation?
On recreation fund?
Yes, ma'am.
That's an increase in cash balance.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a statement in regards to what Counselor Merrill said. I think that we need to have a discussion item on our next agenda to discuss the wages. It's very important that we do that now, so we can get prepared for 2020.
We budgeted up to $9, and then as I had mentioned before, we get, the State Legislature did increase some, they increased, the health insurance has increased, and then para did increase for the employer shares. So we had those additional costs, and we needed to see how it was going to impact our final cash balances, and we certainly will be looking at changes there, because both Madam City Manager and myself agree that we do need to increase salaries.
I think that discussion that I was talking about does not just include wages and salaries. I think it has to be more comprehensive in discussing what we need. That's my.
That's good. Thank you very much. I think that's a great idea. We have discussed previously that we have been looking at increasing the budget and preparing for the actual $9 increase, so I think you ladies have been doing a great job. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I have a quick one. Yesterday at the County Commission meeting, the senior citizens center was awarded $75,000. Is that reflected in the budget, or will that come in as a budget adjustment request later on?
That was budgeted in our preliminary, in our preliminary, in our.
Yes, you were anticipating that.
We were anticipating, because they had committed themselves to 75, and the city matches that 75.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Just one last question, going back to the Solder contract. You mentioned that they're not here full-time? Is that, because I've been told that there's two employees that are here full-time.
Let me defer that over to the Utility Director.
Thank you.
Can she give you a little more information?
I do want to correct you. We do have one Solder Miller employee at Wastewater who is here five days a week. We have other employees that come in as needed. We have, when we have issues or we need training, or we have focus on what needs to happen at the plant, we may have one or two other employees show up, a day here, a day there. At Water Treatment Plant, we have a person that shows up, the lead shows up two, maybe three times a week. So the Water Treatment Plant, we definitely do not have somebody there five days a week. They are available. For instance, I believe it was last Saturday, we had an emergency. He got out of bed at 5:00 in the morning and was driving down here while our staff were trying to address the emergency. So they do have days when they do show up, but there are some times when they get called in due to the needs of maintaining the health and safety of our community with our water and wastewater. So I do have one Solder Miller employee at Wastewater that is there five days a week. Everybody else is intermittent.
Could you explain to the council and to everyone here today, Madam Mayor, why is it that we have to be on full-time? The importance of this position.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Water and wastewater are a little unique in that they are, the ability to run a water and wastewater plant falls under an operator certification program through the state. We are required, through our permitting and through the state, to have certified Level Four operators at our plants. We do not have a Level Four at the water plant. The Solder Miller employee is a Level Four. At our wastewater plant, we do have one person there who holds a Level Four, and he is in the lab. We recently had an inspection by the Environment Department, and they stated we needed multiple Level Fours, that we couldn't even operate with just one, because if they get sick or on vacation or after something happens and they need to leave, they must have a backup. So we do have staff from Solder Miller who hold these State of New Mexico certifications that are authorized to be able to operate these plants, that are very temperamental, critical, bad process change could result in contamination of our river water, or could result in contamination of our drinking water. So the, clearly in the regulations for operator certifications, it says if you do not hold the proper level, you cannot make a process change. So either you must hold that level or be supervised by somebody who holds that level. And supervision can't happen from Hawaii, it has to happen here. So for instance, when we had that emergency, the gentleman who holds the Level Four for the Water Treatment Plant got out of bed, got his car, headed straight down, while the staff did what they could to isolate the issue until he arrived and they make any process changes they made. So that's kind of a short summary, generally speaking. We cannot operate these plants without the proper certification, and they need to be multiple people at those certifications in case of illness, vacations, or emergencies.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up to that.
Yes, sir.
I remember when we approved that contract, it's by time, you know, I understand that part.
Yes, sir.
But the part that I'm hearing out there is that it's not just that one Level Four anymore, it's other employees that are involved in this contract, and that's the confusing part, where we're not filling our staff, but we're hiring these ones. That's the hard part. And the amounts that we're given, that I'm told, you know, it's almost double what you reached the contract was. So I don't know if that's true or not. Of course, I'm sure you'll get us that information.
I'll work with the City Manager over by the accurate numbers. The unique thing about the wastewater plant is there's two portions, there's two parts to the job. There is the treatment side that involves the water coming in, the process that it takes for us to treat it before we can even discharge it back into the river, and that process is a chemical process, it's a scientific process. You have to make sure that the bugs stay alive so that the sewage process is properly turned basically back into organic soil before we are allowed to discharge any of the water and dispose of any of the soil. The second part of the wastewater treatment plant is what's called collections. That's where our staff go out and they clean the manholes, they clear the lines. That's the large camel that I know Counselor Howell has commented on before, that we've been able to factor out manholes or when there's been flooding. That equipment can only be driven by city employees, so the two employees or the three employees or four employees that might be working that task, none of them have the certification to perform collections. So we send somebody with them who has the collection certification. When I say the Level Four, that's to be able to operate the plant. A secondary tasking is being able to address these failing lines, these clogged lines that get clogged with roots or with rags, and we also, the state also requires a collection certified person to run the collection side. We have not had that in the past. So we were actually performing collections. My staff, my responsibility, were performing collections without a certified collection person. We needed to perform that task. We needed to clean out the manholes. The state was aware, the Environment Department was aware, that we were trying to come up with a solution. So now we do have a Solder Miller employee that goes out with the collection staff, we do have a Solder Miller employee, and they only go out part-time, like I said, I think they're there two or three days a week. And then we do have a Solder Miller person who's here at the plant for the treatment side. There might be a person, there's a young lady that's going back and forth assisting at the water and wastewater, because our SOPs are out of date. We have a lot of permits that require additional documentation and reporting, and that has not been there. So they're helping us on the administrative side as well, get back to where we need to be. So the last few months have been a lot about getting back to where we need to be, not maintaining, which is my goal, is to get us to where we can maintain. Right now, it's about recovering from where the plants had ended up.
Counselor Howell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is to Ms. Gilbert. Ms. Gilbert, isn't Solder Miller supposed to mentor our employees and get them prepared to be a Level Four operator?
So Counselor, that's part of the job, the primary job, is to keep the plant from failing. So when they first got here, to be blunt, our plant was dead. We did not have live bugs, it was not processing at all. We were basically just flowing through sewage water. Our plant was not operating the way it needed to be. So their focus when they first got here was to get hold of that, because that's the most critical, that's what we discharged into the river. We were not in any violations. EPA was aware of where our conditions were at, they knew that we were having a hard time. But when Solder Miller came out here, that was their number one assignment. Get the treatment plant that discharges into the river, get that back to where it needs to be. Now that that is operational in a much better state, a metric is our sludge had got up to 10 feet. It's a 12-foot tank, so we were two feet from filling that tank. That's the waste that's not processing properly. When the Environment Department came out and inspected us, and they commented on how much progress we had made, we were down to five feet. This last week, it was reported to me that we are now between two and three feet, which is ideal. So since February, we've been able to recover on the plant and put it back into where it needs to be, which has allowed some of the employees that were focused on, in the plat where it needed to be, to now be able to spend time with staff, working with them out in the field, because again, my responsibility, I did not have someone to properly train them, so they were sent to do taskings the best of their abilities, and they did them to the best of their abilities, and I do not hold them accountable at all if they did things incorrectly. But now I have somebody who can show them the best way to use the equipment, the best way, which direction to go up or down a sewer main, what's the proper tool to use. way, which direction to go up or down a sewer main, what's the proper tool to use, what's the pressure to use when you're clearing a line, uh, what are things that you're looking for, sight, sound, smell? And I did not have that opportunity before to provide my staff what they needed. Now that I have Solder Miller, they do have somebody who's going out in the field with them and, and teaching them hands-on. Along with that, they do have tailgate meetings, they do talk about their processes. Uh, there's a lot more to go. Uh, we've had a couple employees that have been there for a few years, uh, we have some new employees and we're, uh, we're, we're trying to give them all the training that they need. Part of the training is self-training. And we do have employees now that are watching videos, learning things on YouTube, they're trying to advance their own knowledge and experience. Solder Miller is giving them their experience and trying to pass on that, with everybody who's been there, hundreds of years of experience, uh, some of the people that we've had come to assist us are actually the instructors who teach or have taught down at what's called the short school. It's one of the schools that we have a couple times a year. Uh, so we've been able to bring in, uh, some of the best to be able to, to, to help. Is it happening quickly, or are, are my employees able to be level fours today? No. It takes time, it takes experience, it takes being able to hear the sound of a pump, smell something, see something and know what's happening and, and what needs to be done. So it's, it's a process.
There's a lot of, there's a lot, I just want to comment. There's a lot of disparity between what you're saying and, and what we're hearing. So I'd like to see if we can really get to the bottom of that, because it's, it's not good. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Vega, is there money in the budget to provide money for our employees to get trained in whatever specific training they may need?
Yes, ma'am. Each budget includes a budget for employee training.
So there's money in the wastewater treatment budget and there's money in the, uh, water?
In the water.
In the water also?
Yes.
And do those employees go to the training first and get reimbursed? Or do they get, um-
Per diem.
Whatever classes or whatever they need to do paid for?
Well, of course, uh, registrations and, uh, for the, for whatever classes and training they would take are paid directly by the city. Uh, as far as to cover the city, the employees' expenses, they can choose to go per diem or they can choose to go actuals, which mean, if they went actuals, they'd have to stand out of pocket and, uh, provide, uh, our accounts payable with all the, the receipts that they expended.
And if they have to test for a certification of any kind?
That's covered.
That's covered by the city?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that included in the, um?
That would be covered under the employee training.
Okay.
Or under the travel, um, travel and reimbursements, uh, which is, uh, in our budget here, it's seventy-two oh three.
So if someone was working at the waste treatment plant, then they could say, I wanna take the training for, you know, certification level two or three or whatever, then the city would provide that-
Yes, happily.
Financial.
Yes, ma'am.
May I also defer to Ms. Gilbert, because she seems to want to share some information?
Yes. Well, Ms. Gilbert. Thank you, Madam Manager, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the other thing I wanted to add to that is, it's a, it's a unique, unique program. We actually haven't anybody, had anybody participate in it yet and I'm, I'm trying to encourage them. Sacramento, uh, Sacramento College or Sacramento University out of California has a distance learning program that will prepare students for water and wastewater certification level, containing their levels. Uh, we have purchased all of the books, so none of the employees need to acquire any of the textbooks. It is a ninety-nine dollar class. This is a college-level class. So the difference here would be they would pay for it and they would get reimbursed seventy-five percent of it. But we cover all the books. The classes that, that Ms. Vega was talking about are the short schools, which happen about four times a year, uh, and those are paid for. We've had, uh, at least two of the solid, uh, speaking of two of the wastewater employees attend, uh, that training in the last few years, um, and they've taken their tests and they were offered a chance to, to go back and, and many of the employees don't wanna go back until they feel like they're ready, uh, because they wanna make sure that they, they can test. Uh, one of the requirements that is outside of our control is that the city requires, or the state requires you to have one year of experience before you can test. You don't have to have a one year of experience before you attend the school. So, uh, each one of those, the employees at wastewater has been offered the chance for Sacramento manuals class, uh, plus attending the, the short schools. And this, the first time ever, uh, we're gonna have a test here in Las Vegas in October. So we've pushed to try and get some of the training and some of the testing here and we're gonna continue to, to work towards, uh, having as much training as possible as, as, uh, in addition, Solder Miller is working with me to put together a syllabus, um, and myself and Solder Miller staff, uh, we'd like to do after-hours dedicated training where they're not caught between work and studying, but can actually dedicate time to, to, to learning from, for those who have their-
Uh, Ms. Gilbert, thank you very much. We appreciate your, uh, discussion. You've been very informative and we're at the point where we need to move forward. We've only got a few minutes to finish the discussion. Okay, what is it, Madam Mayor?
Nine minutes.
Counselor Casey?
I move approval of resolution number nineteen dash forty, final fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, budget submission to DFA.
Second.
Two seconds, we'll call please.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Yulubri Jr.?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Howell and Counselor Yulubri Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is very important, very important, not too much. Uh, the next item-
Thank you, girl.
I'm sorry. The next item is the approval disapproval of the ASME local twenty-eight fifty-one agreement. And we have Ms. Gilbert and Mr. Chris Armiho, and Mr. Michael Blair. Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Uh, Madam Mayor, councilors, uh, you've had a chance to meet Chris Armiho, the, uh, Council Eighteen Representatives. Uh, and I believe you also know Abraham Mestus. And everybody calls him Blair, I call him Michael, but he gets upset when I call him Michael, because nobody else knows by that. Blair. Myself, Ms. Vega, uh, we had some other representatives from city management that were able to work with the ASME negotiating team. And, uh, Mr. Armiho is correct, this, uh, I think our negotiation for three weeks.
We visited.
Three. And so we were able to work, uh, make some compromises on both sides and be able to come up with, I think, is a very good, uh, contract, providing a, a pretty good pay raise for many of our hardworking, uh, staff members, uh, as well as, uh, we made four changes. Uh, one was that, and please correct me if I, if I misstated anything. Uh, one was that when you, when the union employees need to meet with their, need to make a call to their union rep, they previously had five minutes, we're extending that to ten, so they can make that call and provide whatever information they need, uh, to their union rep to be able to address whatever concerns they have, uh, after hours on, on private time. But that gives them a chance to make that call and get the information that they need to, uh, to their rep and they'll have about ten minutes to do that, um, as opposed to the five previously. Uh, we did make a, an adjustment to, uh, the rest period article. Uh, there is, we, we do sometimes have employees that get hired and it's unsafe for them to stay on the job site. This had been something that had been in the contract before. We didn't want the employee to lose any money if they needed to go home for safety reasons. So we added in that the supervisor manager could make the decision that they need to go home for safety reasons, but that the employee could choose, uh, they could make the choice, did they wanna use vacation time to be able to, to still get their full paycheck, uh, or did they wanna take a leave without pay? But we, we gave that option to, to the employees. Uh, the two other ones were the, is a seventy-five cent pay increase for, uh, ASME and, for bargaining member, uh, members. And as well as there's what's called a longevity increment, uh, that increased from seven cents per year to thirteen cents per year. Those were the four changes. Did I miss anything? So I appreciate, uh, this team.
I'm going to limit it to three minutes because we're running pretty close to time.
One question. Is the city still using Martinez and Associates to help bargain or, do they use it last year?
They do not use it this year. I don't know if they used it last year or not, I don't think they had them.
I thought you had said last year.
No, they haven't used them. Uh, I think you have staff on hand that's perfectly capable of handling the negotiation.
That's the way it should be, sir.
So, yeah, most definitely. Quite safe. I don't wanna get into that. But I do wanna appreciate you guys for taking this into consideration, recognizing the city's most valuable resource, which are your employees. So it's been working well, we're excited about that, a couple little hiccups here and there, uh, we're able to work through it and, uh, we're here the day before you asking for your support, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Casey? Do you have any questions? Counselor Howell? Counselor, what is the pleasure? Matthew. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, let's see. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees ASME Local twenty-eight fifty-one Agreement.
Second. Second to Casey, we'll call.
Counselor Yulubri Jr.?
Yes.
Counselor Merrill?
Yes.
Counselor Howell?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Howell and a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Madam Mayor, motion carries. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is such a good thing for, um, for our, our employees. The next item on the agenda, the final item, is the approval disapproval of salary increases seventy-five cents to all non-union bargaining unit employees who have successfully completed a six-month probationary period to include part-time employees with at least one year of continuous employment in the city of Las Vegas. Madam Mayor, Madam Ms. Vega?
Thank you. Finance Department along with, uh, Madam City Manager would like to, are submitting a formal request to approve or disapprove of the salary increase of seventy-five cents for all non-bargaining unit employees who have successfully completed six-month probationary period. This recommendation includes part-time employees with at least one year of continuous employment in the city. There are approximately a hundred and sixty non-bargaining unit employees in this category. The cost for these employees, including benefits, would be two hundred and fifty thousand. The cost will be distributed and shared by the general fund, enterprise funds and housing. The salary increase, if approved by Mayor and Council, would be effective the first full pay, pay period thereafter. Thank you.
Questions, tell us, Counselor, uh-
Questions?